You have a stylish sheet?
That's it.
Are you getting paid for working at home?
No ma'am, I'm a volunteer.
Okay.
How's it looking so far?
Um, so far, it's, I can't really say without these, they have to put the numbers up. You can go to the Gulf Dill, close the street, they'll have it.
Aw boy. Alright, thank you.
Thank you, very much.
We won, put it down. Catch me while I'm catching you, you got me recording it? Alright. Put them for a salad?
I read!
Yeah! How you doing, yeah? How you doing?
Alright.
Ah, what have I seen?
Give me some numbers.
It's talking about you today. I'm still around!
Hi, Amina. How we looking?
We won in sixteen, we got one of us to talk.
We got second to Tucker in twelve.
Okay.
Tucker got seventy-five, we got seventy-three. Hey, Julie! I'm ready to do the, I'm ready to do the hookah man. I tell you, I tell you.
Can't you go on there? I'm still hanging on. I don't retire yet, but I retired three years and I went back to the roof. That's what happens with retirement.
Hey, we fought in my side.
Oh, for your batteries be dead.
What, what, what?
I shot it outside.
Why I say four and three?
Get the word, get your Stella right. Now vote for the strong ride, get the work, we should know. Honey, we like, we beat Tucker and all, I'm joking, so. Yo, uh, what's up, good numbers, give me more, let's go. Let's go, give me more. Give me more numbers, give me more numbers. Wait, who, what about she gets that boy? Well, best she gets that boy, I wanna know, best she not where your ass going?
He's thirty-three, nobody gave him to me then.
Alright, what do you have?
Are you sure? Forty-one, forty-two, forty-four.
They tried to give Rass a hundred and two votes, Rass had a hundred and ninety-two.
Really?
Yeah.
And she was like, I couldn't read her.
What place did he come in in your area?
Can you tell, say again what just happened now?
When they was waiting to print out, she said it said a hundred and two, but it said a hundred and ninety-two. And she said she couldn't tell the difference whether it was zero or not. It was obviously not.
Yeah, baby.
You wanna take these, you wanna take it from these here?
Who told you that?
She is Rass's aunt. Rass's.
Everybody should tell you that, that's all we got. I told you that, that's all we got. Twenty-five, he was, that's all we got. I'm gonna go with that. You know, you know, we not only can't clean, you know, we only have what we have.
I see these is going around. That are watching, rolling.
Two more, two more, two more. What's up? Gee, you're alright. Two more.
I can imagine, Dale Chaney. Alright, Dale Chaney is here, hanging first, Quentin Thomas, second, Rass third. But Rass beat Tucker and won more, and beat Quentin Thomas in the vote. So in twenty-one, twenty-two, and twenty-three, he number three's there. Quentin Thomas is number, he's number two. Quentin Thomas is number three.
How you doing? Alright, alright.
And you wanna ask me why?
I could, I could give you the guys.
I gave to the people the wrong. Rass uh, beat Donald Tucker by one, only difference.
Donald Tucker in the grand court?
Yes! One machine, and the twenty-first district we got a hundred thirty, and the twenty-third we got nine eighty, twenty-four we got no. Rass beat Donald in the twenty-four. But Donald got like two more, more than him. Oh, he, he gonna be, he's, he's, he's. I told you, she's here, I'm telling you. It's gonna be, it's gonna be Jenkins, it's gonna be either Chaney Field, Tucker, and Rass. Those are your four positives. But I hope to have six of us, see, it's the youngest and the most talented.
That's right, that's right.
Make the president.
That's right.
Thanks a lot, take care. Alright, how about that?
I told, I told them that, you know, it's a whole, whole tale. The first uh, district that comes in, that goes through, you're gonna win.
Central was the first one, central.
That's what they always say, that I always learn. Okay, I'm gonna go.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm gonna walk over there.
We really need that too, there ain't no, let me get camera. Now with the TV, we ain't on the news.
Where you hear it from?
Oklahoma.
How'd you get here?
By bus.
Come on, man.
He stopped holding all the plates.
I gave you my five.
Go check out.
If the order came out today, it still wasn't gonna hurt him because people were not gonna be coming out, period.
Should be known as inside.
Yeah, everybody's in there.
Yes, he does have something to do with it. Who you think was supporting them people? Who you think did it?
I already know who did.
Who?
BC fucked up too. BC cheated too.
I asked about that.
And everyone like, come on, let me get that.
Vanessa, you have a phone call.
Uh, first I just wanna thank everybody who spent their time, money, and energy in this campaign in Newark. Some people waiting here from Newark, people in Newark, I thank you for the people of Newark. One thing about struggle is it is protracted. That means it goes over a period of time. And you have to know this. Before we, you know, completely feel like everything is lost, we have to know that struggle is protracted, that it's it's one time to the next time, to the next time, to the next time. I told WBGO, they said, uh, so, what would you, you know, make analogous analogy to your campaign? And when over, I said, well, you know, the campaign, I guess, would be like Nat Turner's Rebellion. Because even though Nat Turner's Rebellion didn't end slavery, it just meant slavery was coming to an end.
That's right.
We can't allow this to make us to grow, to become cynical, to become hateful, or to be like the people who align themselves against us. The real reason we lost is because we fought against the entire city.
That's right.
That is the truth. The entire city fought against us. Booker Bridgeforth, which, from the beginning, people felt like that's what we wanted. We should've went with it, we can't, it's over, you understand what I'm saying? The people who were telling us that Booker was a demon, were demons themselves.
There you go, talk about it.
So, I mean, interesting enough, whatever we felt like, if Booker, we wanted to go with Booker, we should've went with him. We wanted to go with Mamie, we should've went with her. Wholeheartedly and completely, I told the press, before it was over, I said, I hope Booker kicks his ass. And I believe that because George Branch is not a friend of mine, never been. Sharp James is not a friend of mine, he's not a friend of yours. Last night at a meeting, I told y'all, I said, well, we getting upset at each other, and everybody yelling and screaming, but the real enemies are never in our meetings. They're never in our meetings. You got people who, sometimes we mistake bad judgment for things that, you know, sometimes we mistake people, we make bad judgment, or some people do this, and some people do that. But the best thing we did was fight. Like the eyes of the prostitute says, the best thing we did right was the moment we started to fight. The best thing we did right. Everybody said that all these young people was involved in the campaign, they seen them on the streets, it was people everywhere, putting out literature. Listen, man, everybody was putting out Bessie Walker literature, Quintana literature, everybody put it out, everybody put it out. Bradford put it out, Branch put it out, uh, Fagou put it out, JJ put it out, the mayor put it out. Uh, some people even told me, the paint, Willie and them put it out, I don't know, so many rumors, but I, I know that, every poll I went to, I seen it, and every, every place I went, and, and the sentiment of the people was always good wherever I went. People liked the campaign, they loved what we stood for, we don't even know if the numbers is completely correct.
Think about that.
But everywhere I went, the North Ward, uh, Southwest, Central, everywhere I went, people was, for us. Even people who was mad that we had Booker on our ticket, they was like, yeah, I was upset that you put Booker on your ticket, but I gave you the vote anyway. You know, so, the sentiment is out there, I think from this point on, we might, we, we can do whatever it is that we wanna do. You know what I'm saying, from this point on, we can make some decisions, and we can fight, and you know, we just gotta trust in ourselves, and believe that we can do what we set out to do. Try to make, become, make ourselves more organized and more pointed, because the people who we are fighting are very organized. And they have more people on their side, they have more, well, they don't have more people, they have access to people on their side. They have money on their side, and the resources on their side, that we don't necessarily have. We have to get up, we just have to get out there and fight, and fight again. We got the same numbers we had the first time, a little bit more, that means that the people who wanted to vote for us, they voted for us. That's what that means, that means that the people, we got diehard voters, the people who voted for us in May twelfth, came back to the polls on June ninth and did it again. That's what it means, to understand that, it means that. It means that our people, there are eight thousand some odd people in this city who want us to do something. And we can't just let those people down because we've been personally hurt. The struggle is protracted, and it's a war that you engaged in, and because you've been hit in the face, doesn't mean you give up. What it means is that you fight harder, you strengthen your resolve, you dig down, you pull more people out, you get more people involved, you make your commitment more serious than it was, you become more committed, and you fight harder, that's all it means, fight harder. I lost a lot of things, you know what I'm saying, you know, I've, I've, I've lost a lot of things, I'm not, the losing, it wasn't even about winning or losing, really, to me. And there's many times in here, when I thought that, you know, uh, winning was, was, some people, I thought winning was very important, you know, some people thought that, you know. To me, you know, it, it was about trying to fight these people at any cost, fight these folks, get folks out, raise the consciousness of people, try to get out in these streets, and let them know what's happening, try to get people involved, and to fight, fight and fight, and let them know, and we had them scared. When you do, they spent six hundred thousand dollars twice, election process costs six hundred thousand dollars. The city doesn't have to have a runoff. They decided to have a runoff, which means they spent six hundred thousand extra dollars, one million, two hundred thousand dollars, to make sure that we don't win. Not counting the money the mayor spent in his own race, plus the money he spent in this race too, to make sure that he spent, other people win, because those other people, they didn't have no men, they didn't have no people, no soldiers, no money, no nothing. The mayor stuff, he'll say that he had nothing to do with it, but that was him, from the door, completely. He spent twice as much money to make sure we don't win, which means that they are working harder to maintain their power. That they have to work harder to maintain their power, and sooner or later, it's gonna go. That's just science, it's inevitable, it's inevitable. So if you don't sit down, it inevitable will happen, inevitable. And whatever we decide to do in two thousand and two, whether it be don't get in it at all, or, or, or support somebody, or not support somebody, or run somebody for this, or run somebody for that, whatever we decide to do.
We're doing it again.
Then, that's what, that's what we'll do in two thousand and two, definitely. I told them they haven't seen The Last of Us, they, they know it. They know it, it's, it's impossible for us to, time goes on, it benefits us. Time is on our side, science is on our side, people are on our side. I just, you know, I see a lot of down faces in here, I don't want you, you know, I understand that people are upset, I'm upset.
I'm not upset, I'm just angry.
When I lose, when I lose basketball games, I get upset. I might not like, look like I'm, I'm, I'm upset, but I'll be, I, I really, I'm upset, because what's really upsetting is the work that people gave, and the work that people did to the campaign, and that's the, you know, that's the thing that upsets me. But uh, we ain't gonna, we ain't gonna leave without fighting, no doubt.
That's right.
The mayor knows it, you know, he knows it.
He's a scary sucker.
Today's newspaper had the Terrence Ditt. The Zoo Crew thing, the Zoo Crew thing in the paper, so. And I think it was done not by coincidence, that they purposely put the Zoo Crew thing in the front page of the paper. I'm gonna just tell you everything because I think that it's important that everybody knows, so you can go out in the streets and tell everybody, you know, everywhere you came from, what's happening here in Newark, that we really had a people's campaign, and that there's a lot of people who claim to be revolutionary, but won't fight revolution. Who won't come, participate, but will comment and criticize. Who won't do the day-to-day tedious work that it takes to make it happen. Don't tell me you want people to be free, and you don't think it's important to fight for a black woman that's supporting projects who can't wash her clothes? Or kids and French meat projects?
We got you bad, so don't worry about it.
Playing checkers with rocks and glass in a city with a multimillion dollar performing arts center. That's, that's, don't tell me nothing about that, I don't wanna theorize with you, or debate. I know there's kids in this city who was hoping to God that we won this thing. Listen, man, if, I mean, from now, uh, to two thousand and two, we have to be planning, we have to be working.
That's right.
And we have to be about less talk and more action. And I don't mean that to mean we don't study, I mean that to mean that what we say on the streets, don't talk about it, be about it. We gotta get out here and fight. And all this crazy stuff we hear on the news, is, it ain't important to be organized, ain't important to have this, it ain't important to have that. They tell us that because they organized, and don't want us to be. Because if they wasn't organized, they couldn't win. And the thing is, they can get organized around defeating you. They can get organized around defeating you, and evil will come together to defeat you every time, if we don't pull ourselves together and fight, and that's what we have to do. And, and, I mean, that's, I mean, it's clear to me, it's clearer and clearer to me, I sat up there and watched, the numbers come in, and the people talk, and everything, and I saw what was happening, but I knew last night what was happening. I knew last night what was happening, because most of the race, I kept quiet in here. Tried not to yell, or be in charge, because it was the right thing to do. Cory Booker, we don't know where he came from, we know where these people come from. And I was, I told people, if Cory Booker becomes a problem, we just have, we would just have to fight him too. I mean, that's just what happened, you know, China Mao, and Kuman Tang, and you know, one minute people your friend, the next minute they your enemy. I mean, that's just the clear thing, it's not a contradiction at all, and that's what you have to understand. You cannot let your enemy choose your friends and your enemies for you. And that is our problem in our streets, and we stopped out there, and two brothers was fighting, uh, the police arrested a guy, and he come to tell me, that's why he don't participate in elections, because of the police? He don't participate in elections because of the police? I said, there are some people who need to get beat up, problem is, we beating up each other, instead of the people who need to get beat up. And they're telling us who to beat up, and so they said, they put out that anti-Cory stuff, they put out the anti-Mamie stuff, and in the meantime, they was putting out the anti-Baraka stuff. And Donald Tucker, he hung out with us, and they was on him too, and his numbers was low, and he joined with us because he had to. I want you to know that, he had to, he had to join with us, he had to fight with us, he had to, he had to, he had no other choice, they put him in a corner to do that. Believe me, if he wasn't in the corner, it wouldn't have happened. They put him on a, in a corner to bring him over to us, uh, Sharp James approached Mamie Bridgeforth and threatened the poor lady, sicced some thugs on her in Bradley Court, you know, almost tried to beat up in the middle of the street in, in the West Ward. You know, thank God she won, Mamie Bridgeforth.
She won?
Mamie Bridgeforth, you know, she came up the victor, Cory Booker came up the victor.
He won, he beat you! Thank God!
So, that's two of them gone, three, Martinez is gone too. There's chipping at them piece by piece. August Amador said that he was gonna start a freshman class thing, hopefully they all get together, and you know, I, you know, I hope that Bessie, you know, joins with Augie and Cory and the rest of them, and try to do us right in the city, and not hang out. You know, I just hope for the best, because really the thing that, the thing that, the people who got to lose is, is us. Working people, we got the most to lose, and working people's children have the greatest to lose out of anybody. And that's the bottom line, because really, what they after is your future, your children. Working people's children, they want them, they want them, because they don't want no more Paul Robinson. They don't want no more DuBois, or Bo Peete, they just want Michael Jordan and Puff Daddy. That's what they want, and that's what they got, and anything other than that will be attacked, you trust me. And I believe that they told Talon Ditt that he had to plead guilty before June ninth.
That's right.
I believe that, he not, not knowing, he not knowing what's going on, these people are everywhere. They everywhere, and our problem is, we forget it. They everywhere. They everywhere, and until you start believing in the people that surround you, then that's it, and stop questioning each other, and doubting each other, and having more faith in them than we do in ourselves, until working people stop fighting with each other, and doubting each other, and these kids in these streets stop doubting and fighting with each other, they always gonna win, they always gonna win. When we take little petty things and make it the reason why we don't help each other to beat these people, finally, we will always lose, because they will unite, they will always unite. Bessie Walker and Chaney Field were enemies, they are friends because they have united around defeating us. They will always unite, they will find room to unite, because you are the only people with dignity enough to say you ain't gonna join anybody's team, or anybody's ticket, to question it, to fight it, to at least mull it in your brain, to, to have doubt about it, maybe we should do this, maybe we should do that. They don't care, whatever gets them in, is gonna get them in, and anybody who will prostitute themselves to win now, imagine what they'll do when they get into office.
That's right, that's right.
Just remember that. I wanna keep you out, I just wanna say thank you again for participating in the campaign, for working, for fighting, it's not the end, so, listen to what's happening in Newark, you know, clearly, I, I mean, even in the mayoral campaign, I learned ten times as much more in this campaign than we did in the mayoral campaign, I mean, the whole system is just completely a fraud. It's completely a fraud, the, from district leaders on to the top, it's a fraud, it's not designed so independent folks can win, it's not organized, so working people can win, it's a fraud. I mean, that's what I believe. And, and finally, I believe we need an independent party. We was for independent parties. We was for civilian police review board. We for more jobs. We for de-, uh, healthcare, daycare, that when they throw all these people off of welfare in nineteen ninety-nine, when it comes around, and, 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 and Donald Tucker even was going around telling people that they're not building enough housing in Newark for the buildings that they're blowing up, that there are over thirty thousand homeless people in the city of Newark right now. And coupled with the fact that, and I'm talking about people who live with their mothers and their fathers and their grandmothers now, because they have no home, bunched up in senior citizen homes now. We talking about folks who will be thrown off of welfare with no means of employment, with no me-, uh, means of training, will be thrown out in these streets in nineteen ninety-nine, and you think ninety-eight was bad. When ninety-nine comes around, it's gonna get worse. But that's what they want. They create chaos and destruction in our community to enter fascism. And we have to understand that, and we can't buy into any of this stuff. All these roadblocks that you see running around your community, we was out there, we seen roadblocks. Police stopping every single person that comes, they set up these little cones and these lights, and they stop every person that comes through, it's fascism. Them, them telling you you can't speak at the, at the council meeting, all of that stuff. All of it, all of it. They're, they're making our communities chaos, so you can ask for that. People running on the fact that we need curfews. They, they wouldn't have said nothing about recreation if it wasn't for our campaign. Nothing, they would have said nothing about youth. They, those people, they was for the state takeover. They was for the state takeover, one. The, the only thing they was arguing about, I put the curfew law in effect. I put this, more police on your street. I expanded the county jail. I did that. That's what they was talking about. And the, nobody said that they, that they kept the schools open to nine. Nobody said that they made more jobs for young people in the summer. Nobody said they created more recreation. Nobody said they built more homes for people to live in. Nobody said that people, workers make an increased living wage because of their employment. Nobody said that. Nobody said that. They said jail, they said curfew, they said police, because that's what they want. Until we get hit, we gonna be beat. That's it. And we keep reading the stories about the cowboys and the Indians that the cowboys keep writing, we always gonna come out the loser. I mean, that's the bottom line. Uh, I'ma go see Cory Booker and give him a congratulations. You know, we just have to let the mayor know that we gonna see him again.
That's right.
Because I want you to know that we didn't run against Bessie or Kaitana or Chaney Field. We ran against Sharp James. Yeah, we ran against the mayor twice. We ran against him in ninety-four, and we ran against him in ninety-eight. And we probably the only ones out there that's bold enough to do it.
That's right.
We ran against him twice. Twice. You know, Mamie Bridgforth, uh, told me that he, 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 he asked her who she was gonna vote for, for council president. That would be contingent on whether he supports her or not. Well, again, thank you. Uh, we got it.
I think, I think, I think all of us should, first of all, not only, you know, celebrate what, what Dad's done, but I think it's campaign manager.
That's right.
First of all, I want to thank everybody for coming and everyday support and campaign like you did.
This is one of the hardest things for me to ever do, is to watch the boogeyman I see in this ruling class do this to my children in front of them. And I don't just mean Raz, Amiti, and Omalaji, I mean all of you. You know, I have always said that I believe all of you are my children, and I do believe this, and we have not lost anything. They have lost, because the only thing they have managed to do is to create a vehicle that will kick their ass.
That's right.
That's the only thing that they have managed to do. The only thing they have managed to do is unite people who have probably never been united this easily and this quickly. We'd have probably got together anyway, but they fixed it so we could get together right now. And I know, my sons, and I know the rest of you, we are not giving up. I, you know, in a way, in a way, they gonna get what they asked for. And they, and we need to give it to them, and we need to start organizing right tomorrow. We gonna go ahead and have our victory party.
Let's go ahead and victory party.
Just wait a minute. Just wait a minute. We have to have our victory party, because the victors are the people. We have created an organization. We are united now. Let us make sure we got everybody's name, address. Let us make sure that we call another meeting. Let us make sure that we create a, a civic organization out of this, so that we can run the state out. All the things you was going to do when you was on the coun-, you don't have to be on the council. We need to commit ourselves that the civilian review board will be. We gonna knock on every damn door. We gonna get every signature we can. It's gonna be.
That's right, that's right.
The state is leaving. They're gone. We are going to do all of the things that you had intended to do, that you promised the people you were going to do. We going to do it. And they cannot stop us. I don't care how much double crossing they do, I don't care how much lying in they do, I don't know how many people they buy off, but they can buy us. The people united can never be defeated. We have black, Latin, Asian, white, and these segregationists here in Newark have used the fact of that Newark is segregated to still, that's exactly what they have used. What we are going to do, we're going to desegregate Newark. We're going into all the communities, we represent all the people of Newark. And we're not going to let them have us somewhere weeping. Yes, I'ma holler and I'ma cry. Oh yeah, I'ma cry. I'ma cry. I'm crying now. But honey, these are tears of fire. You understand? So we just gonna let us have our victory party? Because the only thing they have done is, is created an organization that will beat their little evil asses. People up in here that have, that, that are united around, around, around saving, uh, our, around saving this city and sa-, and saving the United States, because we the only people that can save it. Because these jails will burn it up. Little Amiti, you ready? Ready? You did a good job, brother. You think you can be the campaign manager? You gonna help us organize it? You gonna do it? There you go.
Let's give three cheers for Raz Baraka.
I'm happy.